Scared that it was gonna be a change, it's gonna be easy access from the kids. You know, from what I'm hearing, doesn't sound like it was a traffic issue. The other part is, my folks' grave is right there. And I come from the north always, because our family's all north Staplehurst area and that. So even from my point, it would be very easy for me to access it versus come up the windy road, uh, come down Waverly, and my folks' grave is gonna be right there. So from that point of view, um, is it, there's more access uh, to benefit, to benefit our citizens for the future as well. And then, who say we can't go back and revisit it later?
So is your, your thought process to do a, amend it to the proposed to remove number fifteen?
I agree.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
We've only been talking about this for like twenty years.
If we remove it, do we have to state anything so we don't go back to the minutes from two thousand and seven or whatever?
I, I would actually, um, state in here that the gate, just because that's the contention point right now. And we can even put the gates on Fourth Street shall remain open at all times for now. Because we're also, as Dennis talked about, that south gate is an issue too. And if we were, we're gonna have one open, let's state in the other one, the other one's open for now. And if we ever come back, we could close one, we could close them both, they're both mentioned. We understand the policy.
So you would, you would just amend it rather than strike it?
I would amend it to read the gates, gates on Fourth Street shall remain open at all times. If that was the direction that somebody wanted to go. I'm not advocating one way or the other on that, I'm just noting, if you're gonna go opposite of what we have here, because this, this matches the council's prior direction and the, kind of the direction that the, the cemetery board at that time went at too.
Kelly, would you have a vote to amend it and then a vote to adopt it, correct? You have two separate votes if that was the direction you wanted to go?
Yep.
And then, of course, anything else you would want to amend? So you have a clear vote on amending it, maybe a clear vote, you don't co-meggle the two?
Because we do, I still want you to adopt them tonight, whatever you guys do, please adopt them, because we need to work on one document.
I have no problem. I'll amend the motion to state that the gates stay open on Fourth Street at all times.
So the motion is to amend the rules and regs that are before you? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Your motion is second, now we still have further discussion on this if you'd like, so it'll feel like you're being rushed for the new people. Any other questions or comments on this item? If not, then we'll go ahead and register your votes? Please sway the votes?
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Tanyas, Coltrum, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, six zero.
So now that's, that's the, uh, rules and regs that we're now operating under. So if you'd like to make any other changes, you would need another motion to amend it in a different direction. Otherwise, we're open to discussion, and if you'd like to at some point make a motion to adopt the rules and regulations as amended, you can do that. That's where we're at. Any other questions or comments? Greg?
Something else you're gonna probably need to amend then. If you read the next paragraph after those fifteen, it talks about special Memorial Day regulations. If you're going to have the gate open at all times, there's a statement in here, a sentence. The gate on Fourth Street at Waverly Road will be open one week prior to Memorial Day and closed one week after Memorial Day. So I think you're gonna need to deal with that also.
Thank you for pointing that out.
If not, you're gonna have.
I didn't wanna make any assumptions, so we didn't, we didn't work through this that deeply, because we didn't.
Thank you for pointing that out, Greg.
Would, would that though, with the amendment we made, wouldn't that automatically just change that?
No, it seems conflicting.
Yes.
Right, you have to go and amend it.
You would want to just strike?
You have to amend it in all the places.
Or vote just to remove it?
Well, you can make a, make a motion to amend it by removing, um, that, that line and read the line. There's no confusion.
What number is that?
Uh, it's right after, it's not on that first sheet.
It's the last bullet.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and amend it.
You're making a motion to amend?
I'll make a motion that we amend it, uh, that the gate on Fourth Street at Waverly will be open the one week prior and one week after. Uh, I would make this in.
Just to strike.
I would strike, that's what I'm just, I'm just reading.
Strike it.
Amendment is just to strike it.
To strike the last sentence.
Yep.
I'll, I'll second that.
Do you have a motion and a second? To amend the rules and regs by striking the line that we just read? Is there any clutch, any further discussion on that? Saying none, please register your votes? Please sway the votes?
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Tanyas, Coltrum, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, six zero.
Any further discussion from the council? Any other changes?
So now we just need to make a motion to accept.
You want to adopt the rules and regs as amended?
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion to amend the rules and regs as amended.
Adopt them.
Adopt them.
Okay. You have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
With a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes? Please sway the votes?
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Tanyas, Coltrum, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, six zero.
Thank you. Item number two, discussion of future operations of the city burn site. Greg?
Yes, this is kind of a primer, um, it's kind of giving a heads up. As I kind of forewarned you in the previous city administrators notice. The city burn site, is everyone familiar where it's at? Is there anyone on the council that doesn't know where the burn site is? If you're not familiar, do you know where Rumory Lawn and Landscape is?
Yeah.
Directly to the east of that, if you continue to follow the roadway that heads east, it'll wrap around behind the farm field right adjacent to the mainline VNSF. That is the burn site. And the burn site contains a pile of tree debris. Also includes some pallets that can be burned and other things underneath our current state issued permit. There's also a compost site. This is where, um, citizens will take leaves, grass clippings, uh, also commercial haulers. Uh, and they pile those up, they're separated, they're not too far apart, right Bob?
No.
Especially because of quantity. They, they get so large, and so they are located back there. And I kind of laid out, if you read the, um, the narrative that we put with this item. One of the issues we have is, we light the burn pile on fire, because the burn pile. And then, it sparks or ashes after it's done, blow into the compost site. It starts the compost pile on fire, and then that sits and smolders for days on end or fires up or makes all this smoke or everything else. The inverse happens. So we know, because we're under red flag, dry conditions, we are not gonna light this burn site on fire because it's dangerous. But we have a compost pile that sits and basically will self combust because it's generating heat. These are things that over time will start generating heat underneath of them. And so it will self combust, and then it will catch the burn site on fire. And then we have a giant flaming inferno going on there that you can see from the interstate, uh, sometimes apparently. Both of those are always dangerous in bad conditions when you don't have control over these things. And one issue is, the site is just small. There's, it's hard to work the stuff in the way that you can to eliminate that issue. And one of the discussions was, well, at one point in time, we used to have access or we could in the future have access to city property owned south on the other side of Worthman's Creek. It's called Worthman's Creek by the way. We didn't know that for long, now we do. Um, we would have to work through the Corps of Engineers, we'd have to add culverts and some sort of systematic way to get over there, both for us and the public probably. If we decided to have them unload something over there versus us transporting it. The other giant issue with that is, that area over there is the old city landfill on the other side of Worthman's Creek. And so I don't know that there's even legalities that would allow us to put something that will self combust and/or that we light on fire on top of it. Questions to be asked, but I'm trying to give you the lay of the land of how crazy this thing is over there at the moment. The other issue we have now, and I'll kind of lay this out in the narrative, is we also have kind of prime development land there now. Jerry Rumory purchased the land to the south of him, that's kind of self-contained within the creek area, that's the farmland now. Basically, all utilities are available there. Water, wastewater and electric are all available, and he has his final highway access because of the realignment with the rail campus. So he knows exactly how the roadway comes off the highway and goes into his property. And so you can design from that. Well now we have prime developable land in an area where, you know, you go further east, we have flood plain and all kinds of things, right on the highway, that if we develop it, we literally have a giant fiery pile next to it that probably not will be conducive once Rumory decides that he wants to do something with it. One of us is gonna have to give. And the other thing is, is we basically go across Rumory's land, there's no right of way back there. It's basically an access easement. We could get into legalities, right Kelly, about prescriptive easements and all this other stuff. But at the end of the day, Jerry has worked with us to allow us to go across his property to access back there to our property. And so at some point when it's ready to be developed and used, there's no way we should be leaving a combustible pile and then a giant, and when it's fully ready to go, that pile is, I can't even define how huge that gets Bob. It's big. I mean, it's bigger, it's bigger than this room. It's way bigger and then way taller of just trees and debris. And a lot of that is, what fills that, a majority of it is, yes, the city. We put the tree debris that Bob's crew, when we do the street trees and things like that. The electric department, if they take down anything themselves, that's a substantial portion. A lot of the stuff they're doing is trimming, and so they do have the chipper shredder, and they'll, they'll chip it, and then we'll take the chipping somewhere else. But a mass majority of it, if it isn't us or Bob Core's crew, when they're out cutting trees down in the parks or by the trail or in the golf course or something like that, the mass majority of it is commercial haulers, is filling that up very, very quickly. Correct Bob? So all of our tree services in town, uh, and out of town, you don't have to be an in-town one to get a key, you can pay the fee for the out-of-town one. And, uh, they're the ones also filling it up, and we're charging them, how much Derek? I believe it's a hundred dollars?
Hundred dollars for in-town and two hundred for out-of-town.
So, we're charging a, a year?
A year?
Annual fee?
An annual fee of a hundred dollars for a commercial endeavor to take all of their debris and just chuck it off on us and let it become our problem. It really becomes Bob's problem. The compost site is the same issue. A lot of the compost is not Grandma and Grandpa coming out there with their trash can of lawn clippings. It's lawn services, they go out there, pay the hundred dollars and then go around and mow lawns all year long in the summer and dump all their clippings out there for a hundred dollars total. The really big one is, we have at least one, if not two, commercial haulers. That would be, uh, I believe Trash Panda and Dane. Is that correct? I know Trash Panda for sure. They go around and collect your bins of grass clippings, and then they dump it in our compost pile for a hundred dollars on them. And so, that economy of scale is filling this thing up very, very quickly versus the kind of the, hey, this is for, you know, mom and pop to come out and dump off their weekend grass clippings because they mowed the lawn this weekend.
And that was the intent, by the way, this is my fault. Because I would hear from people in town saying, I don't have any place to take my, my clippings, you know, what do I, you know, and, or leaves. And so we, yeah, it was my idea. Um, but it's like, maybe we could find a place that we could put it, well, the original intent was mom, like, is mom and pop do this on a Saturday morning, right, taking their own lawn, not turning into a commercial dump site, which is why it grew, I think, a lot faster than we anticipated. And, and because of its growth, it gets closer to the burn pile and, and so.
What's the possibility?
It was, but originally, it was, wasn't supposed to be like, oh, I did not intend for it to be a commercial answer or answer to a commercial problem, it was meant to be, uh, you mow your yard and you need a place to take it and maybe you didn't wanna pay for the service. Because a lot of people, you know, I know people that have leaves and they have a friend who has a farm and they take the leaves out or, you know, to a farm or someplace to get rid of them. So this was supposed to solve a problem, but I guess it was too popular and created its own problem, I don't know. But Jessica?
My question is, can we still allow mom and pops but not allow commercial?
Only if you shut off commercial access to the burn site entirely.
All right, yeah, because I, I mean, I, I use it, my mom and dad use it. Every time I, your mom and dad's been out, or your dad's been out there when I said, I, I mean, you can't take it away from the citizens. I mean, that would be horrible for us as a council, because that would be really negative. Because mom and pop has been taking stuff out there for years. And if we would take it away, that would be ugly. The thing of it is, I agree, the commercial side, but not for the trees. Because the trees, because a lot of times, for the trees, they're hiring somebody to take trees down in town, and sometimes they are city trees, and then they are hauling it out there, um, for the advantage of the homeowner. But the leaves and that, the mom and pop have to get rid of the commercial. I didn't realize that we were doing that much with commercial.
I don't know that we can disseminate that without moving it. Because there's only one gate, one key. And so, and I'll, here's the other thing, I'll tell you now, if somebody finds out they have, somebody has a key, they're gonna figure their way into there. Now, yes, a big hauler, it's very obvious, they're backing the truck up and dumping it out in there. Um, the other thing that we've had issues with, because there's a lot of issues with this place. Me and Bob have been going back and forth since day one when I got here on this one. Uh, and working with Mel and everything else. So another issue, illegal dumping. And Chief Peters probably hiding in the other room, but numerous times, we've had even commercial haulers literally dump trash out there. Back the trash truck up, because some of them have the smaller units. Just dump it in the pile, drive off, and they're like, I don't know what they were thinking because it's very easy to root through the mail and then find out whose mail it was, ask them who their trash person was, and then track them down.
Or like detectives now.
Yes, that's exactly what happens, correct Chief Pierce?
Yes.
But we're seeing that he.
He dusted her fingerprints.
That people think for some reason that, oh, okay, well, I'm not supposed to do that. So we've even seen them dumping on Rumory's property. Well, they'll go down there and go, oh, it's only for grass clippings and pallets and wood? Oh, well, I'll just dump it here then. And they dump it right into Jerry's stuff, or, and Jerry has a few piles of, because he runs a lawn and landscape company. He has piles of dirt and some other things that he has that are in proximity to the gate but not in proximity to our site. You have to get way further around. One of the things we changed based on Jerry's recommendation was, we did move the gate further in. So at least if there was something where they're like, well, I'm at the gate and it's not open or whatever else and they dump, they're at least dumping on city property, we're gonna come after you, we're gonna prosecute you or make you come clean it up. It's gonna be a hot mess for you. But, that at least helps Jerry out, because Jerry's, by the kind of his own heart, I mean, we're not paying him for anything to have access to get back there. And so, he's had to put up with some of the rigmarole that goes along with it. Let alone we still have this issue of, that's prime developable property right next to it. We're gonna have to move it one way or the other or have some other solution coming down the pipeline. But it's getting kind of bad. The last one, and John can relate to this one too, is when it does catch on fire, the only way we can put the fires out or try to maintain them is to use the pump trucks because, and the water tankers, because there is no water access clear back there. There is no hydrants, no water mains, nothing else. And I've had Mike look this up, and it's probably not economical at this point. Because we don't know the development of that land and where, where the utilities will go to take a water main all the way back there, even a small one, and put a hydrant on the end of it. Because a hydrant technically needs, we would prefer eight inch. Probably could get away with six inch on this one because it's only one thing, but we don't even want to do it. It's not economical in any way, we'll rip it all right back out once he develops. And it's just gonna be a mess. I mean, it's, there's a lot of things going on here. And so, the purpose of tonight was to try to, especially with new council members, just to lay all of this out, start the discussion. I don't know that we have anything specific where we're like, we want you to vote on this tonight. But we really wanted to kind of have the discussion, solicit feedback from you. Um, I know if Jerry was here, he would be, he'd tell you all kinds of fun stories and stuff, but.
One thing that I brought up for many, many times, and Bob's heard me say it, is we own a lot of ground, farm ground. And there's no reason we can't move the compost pile somewhere to one of our farms that we own. And that's nitrogen. That we, they, you could spread it out there. No reason. I brought that up for years.
And Bob, Bob has been, as of late too, he's been taking out and hauling to different farmers that are willing to take it because it got too big, we just had to move it out. And so we were able to move a substantial amount of the compost. The issue with that is, most of the farm ground the city owns is all in the flood plain. And you cannot put a compost site, the site right now is not in the flood plain, at all. You cannot put a compost site in the flood plain. That is a no-no, as unfortunately I am the flood plain administrator.
Yes. So, so with Daryl being here and stuff, some of the comments I hear from people that don't live in the city of Sourd about if we don't maintain this, this burn pile and compost pile is the illegal dumping around county close to Sourd, of people just going out by acreages, you know, a couple miles away from town and dumping stuff in the ditch. Are you, are you getting any kind of feedback?
We don't see a great deal of that, I'm gonna say that it happens. I mean, I can go back thirty-five, forty years when I built my house, and there was a site up north of, uh, yeah, north of Staplehurst, I think. I used to take a lot of construction grit to, illegal site, everybody dumped there. I see it's finally closed off and it's been basically taken care of. But, uh, you shut this down, you're probably gonna create a problem in the county. People will find a way to dump things.
So, so that's kind of my next, you know, part B of my question, do you guys wanna participate in this discussion?
Yeah, I have to ask some questions. I mean, we, we've been pushed things to the landfill more than anything else, but I don't think the landfill will take your compost. I don't think they even watch your trees, do they?
Nope. One of the things that we had Bob Myers do some research on was, what if instead of lighting it on fire, we hire a tub grinder and we chip all of it twice? And we think it'd be about twice a year, based on the volume we're seeing and what a, a normal tub grinder contract. But, it is expensive. Fifty thousand bucks a pop, is what you estimated?
You're looking on average at thirty thousand each time, probably fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year. But I thought, you know, you could offset some of that by raising the, the key prices for, for some of these, you know. Tree services should pay a lot more, you know, uh, then we can leave it the way it is. You know, it wouldn't be a problem, because the problem with it is now, when that catches fire and the compost catches fire, we're automatically going against our license because you can't burn leaves, you can't burn grass, it's all right on our license. Can't burn any of that, now we just got hammered for that here, what, a couple months ago. And, even though we did do it on purpose, it happened. And they weren't pleased about it, but, you know, what, what can you do except put a fire out? But, um, that's a possibility, you know, and that way you don't have to worry about burning it. You don't have to worry about even having a permit to have it. You can just grind it. And as far as the compost goes, we can haul that every fall, we can haul some of it away to keep the piles smaller and, and go that route too.
What do you do with the tree debris though, when you get a natural disaster around here? We get those every three years or so. On clockwork, you get the big windstorm. What do you do with that debris if you do away with this?
I don't, well, I don't know that we're doing away with it. And, and in that case, we would probably just open up and make our own. I mean, that's what a lot of towns, well, I, I'm just using from experience, when I was in Beatrice, we just picked a parking lot, filled it full with tree debris, and I mean, we're talking a big parking lot, like something substantial. Fill it up with tree debris, and then we hired a tub grinder, and they came in and they ground it all, and then you, you charged it. If it was, if it was a real emergency, emergency, and I think that was, I don't know if that was a storm one or if that was related to the.
Reimbursed for it.
You didn't get reimbursed, if it's an emergency, emergency, like a declared one.
Yeah.
But for just the general ones, I know we've had that storm that came through and like, separated bomber rocket and really got through the southeast portion of town by like Bob's house. There was a substantial amount of debris from that thing, I think it took multiple trees out from the county courthouse. It's just that sheer line wind that came through there, and we're still gonna have a lot of debris. If you guys haven't seen St. Gregory, when somebody gets started on those trees, they're all dead. Those all have to come out and go somewhere. There's a lot of trees on the south side of town by the airport and areas like that, that are gonna need to come out and go somewhere. But we need to have a plan, and doing what we're doing right now is not economical, it's not safe, and it can't last into the future because of, it's right next door to developable commercial property. We'll ha, we'll have to decide something at some point when Jerry goes, hey, I got somebody that's buying in this and they're gonna develop it. Now we gotta figure it out very quickly. At least now we're ahead of the game knowing that's gonna come down the line at some point, Matt?
So during big storms, it, remind me if I'm wrong Bob, but I, I thought that like south of Harvest Hall down by the river, you know, we, we would take a lot of stuff, because we just didn't have anywhere to go, kind of like a big snow event, right? And put a lot of limbs down there and then grind them up.
That would be, that would be a no-go.
No, I'm just saying, I, I, my question was, the chips that you made and, you know, see people come and, you know, fill up their trucks or whatever with the mulch there around the house, did they, did they get them all?
Yes, they did actually.
They take, they took them all out?
They did, a lot of that went away too, because the floodwaters got in it down there.
Yeah, well, yeah, I realize that, and then my other comment is, I know the city of Lincoln is working on a biochar uh, prototype development up north by their landfill, because obviously with Emerald Ashmore and, you know, they're planning for how much debris they're gonna have when they're taking out all the ash trees in Lincoln. Um, so biochar is basically making like charcoal where you, where you're gonna heat some, heat wood up, pellets up in, in stuff, in oxygen-free environment, and then people, they said that people were interested in that stuff. But, you know, the size of their project is big. But I, I, I just wanna make that comment that we ought to keep an eye on how that works for them. I think it's kind of in its infancy and everything, but, um, you know, just, just some general comments of, maybe we can make the stuff into something that people load up and take it, take it back home. Because, because it is worth, I mean, it's organic but matter and stuff, so if we take care of it right, it's worth something.
And we just, we just wanted to bring this to your attention tonight, because obviously this is an issue that's gonna be on the horizon. Uh, we don't need any decisions tonight. We just wanted you to be kind of thinking about this, and if you have ideas, you wanna bring to Greg or myself as we move forward. I don't, I, I think that the, the community has come to expect that there be a location for this. We're not proposing to get rid of it and not have a replacement. It's just, we need to figure out, is this the location or are we, is the long-term solution going to be a different location? And I know just anecdotally that, for example, the railroad isn't real excited when that's being burned and there's smoke all over, you know, the tracks where they're coming through there. I've heard that comment before. Um, the problem is, is that, it's like anything, it's like not in my backyard, you know, where are you gonna find a, a better location? If you can find me a location everybody agrees on, I would sure love to see it. Um, because eventually no one, no one wants smoke, you know, necessarily by their property. Um, but there may be other opportunities where it maybe makes sense to at least move the compost part somewhere else or find a solution. Uh, we just didn't want you to be caught off guard if you come with a proposal later um, and not realizing that this is something that we've been talking about for a while and we need to probably start moving in a direction, um, as, as, as the need for this continues to grow. And try to work if there's a solution with the county, we love to have that conversation or at least have you involved in that discussion, so it makes sense. Because we don't wanna push a problem on anyone else either. You know, and one, one, I'll tell you one thing, having it where it's located, when it catches on fire, we get a phone call in about five minutes be, or less, because of its location, everyone sees it going by on fifteen. So, it's, it's a lot, you know, from that standpoint, we get notified right away and we can address it right away. I even made a couple calls on the morning on my way to work, I'm like, do you know this thing is still smoking? Um, and so, yeah, it's, I do think it, it provides a, a community service, whether that should be commercial or just for residents. Um, you know, we can have that discussion as well, but did you wanna add anything?
Just a last one, the other element of this current location that's just really odd is a lot of these places tend to be in some way controlled or secured in the context of, you can't just go there whenever you want to legally dump. The only thing stopping people right now is the roadway itself has a little gate across it with a lock. There's no fence around any of it. We use the natural luck that we have between the railroad, the creek and the farm, which when, other than when it's, you know, in the winter, it's got crops halfway up it, so you can't see back there anyways. And it's barrier'd in perfectly. If you go to any other greenfield site, you're gonna be remiss. It's gonna be really hard to find something that has all those barriers naturally, that makes it very easy for us to regulate. You're probably gonna have to fence it at considerable expense too. That's, because we tried to come up, we looked at all these random sites on the GIS map, and me and Bob went to every parcel we could think. Cause we tried to come up, we looked at all these random sites on the GIS map and me and Bob went to every parcel we could think of the city owns. Cause we own one way out of town on Second Street or Isaac Walton, actually. That is way down there. A massive majority of it's in the floodplain, the little portion that's not, you'd have to fence all the way around it. Lock it up when we're not using it, put a key on it, so.
Rich?
As to the, the fee for commercial dumpers, I, I think if you just looked around at some of the other communities similar size of Seward. And found out exactly what they're doing, because obviously, you know, um, they're getting a deal here, so maybe some of the other ones have worked it. Worked a better deal. And I don't know if, if that's true, Kelly, that if, if, if we're gonna adjust the fee that we charge for commercial. People to come in, if, if we have to change the site in order to do that, or if it's, if we can just say.
No, no, it's in regards to the way we access in and out. We would have to come up with a way to try and decipher.
Land law.
Where we're, cause if we're letting them come in for trees. We're not gonna know that they didn't come in and just dump grass. We're, it's, it's just odd for us or vice versa.
And you go to a lot of smaller communities, there ain't even a gate.
No, there's not even a gate.
The ones that are comparable, we did have Mindy and I can share you, we, me and Mindy can kind of review that. We did survey this already, actually. Uh, a lot of them run some sort of waste site like York or Beatrice. They, Beatrice runs their own landfill. So they have dedicated sites to do things like this. They do full composting with Windrow and a dedicated employee and.
Yeah, they staff these sites.
Yes, and so some of them do that. The other thing you'll find on the commercial side, it tends to be in the more like. Little bit larger or our size and above is basically the, the commercial side, they're just weighing them. They're saying it's this much per ton, just like a, any garbage truck. You come in, you weigh, you go out, you dump, you come back, you weigh, you get your ticket. We'll send you the bill later. And a, a waste station ain't cheap either. So I, I'm just noting all the different things and we can, we can share some of that stuff with you, cause it runs a gamut. It goes all the way from what John talked about where it's. That's just the community site. We just go throw stuff there, all the way up through full on basically that high-level commercial dump. That, you know, you weigh in and weigh out on the commercial side. Even if you bring a pickup, they're gonna weigh you, weigh you out. You're gonna pay the same fee everybody else does. And then mom and pops can still come out and, and do some of their stuff. Cause they have it staffed, so they can regulate that very easily. And we staff the burn site on Saturday morning. There's somebody out there assisting people and then making sure they're not illegal dumping, cause it's open to everyone in the community at that point on Saturdays. And so we have somebody out there, but again, you know, it's for very specific purposes. It's not to run the waste station or. Try to ascertain who's commercial and who's not, you know, it's just to, you know, assist and make sure we're, we're avoiding some of those illegal dumping issues. Because it is wide open at that point.
Does it become conflicting then that the person that owns the land to get to the dump has a, you know, commercial lawn mowing business?
No, I mean, we, we don't.
If we chose to say commercial dumpers can't go there.
I'll be honest with you, I th- I think that Jerry would be perfectly happy for it to be anywhere else. He, he'll haul, he'll haul wherever you wanna haul it if you can get rid of seeing all those trucks coming by his place. And, and he's not even complaining about that. He's very ups, his biggest upset item is the illegal dumping. And especially on his land. That is just not fair to him for the freedom he gives us to access that for the, for our community. So that is not fair to Jerry and all, all that he's given us access to.
Did you bring other comments on this item?
Question on that to Kelly. So can a landlock and stop easement rights on that, say since we own the ground? Can Jerry say you cannot drive on it?
Well, like Greg mentioned, we, we probably have a prescribed easement. Traversing across it for more than ten years. Um, but yeah, that's an issue that, you know, should get resolved.
I mean, with ground and that, they can't stop you to get to your ground, correct? With it, as far as if you own ground on the backside.
Can they? Can't be landlocked, right?
Well, what exactly that access looks like and, I mean, those are all variables that would have to be, you know. There's a lot, there's other things in this city though. We just don't ask all the questions, like where exactly the property line is at the fairground? Cause if we, none of us really wanna know, cause it's gonna cause more problems if you find that out. And so we just let it, let the sleeping. Don't lie on those. So if there's anything else on this item, we'll move on to the next. We're good, we're good?
Alright, um, thank you for the good discussion. On item three, consideration of adding working out of classification item to employee personnel handbook. Greg?
Yeah, this was an item, uh, Derek and I and even, and Nick, Wolf Finance Director, have been working really, really diligently. Um, on amendments and updating the entire employee handbook. And right now, we're currently in section four. Which is kind of the deepest, correct, Eric? It, we put the most work into this and really excited to show it to the Personnel Committee to let them dive into that and. All the stuff, memos we're gonna have to draft for. But one of the things that came up in that discussion and in light of. Um, the loss of Tim Rich Dig, we really noticed that we kind of lack in this specific. Right now, we do not have anything that resembles an out-of-classification, um, policy. Essentially what this is, is. Somebody above you is missing for some reason, whether that's death or they took another job, they were fired. Uh, they had a long-term medical absence. In the police department, we had somebody gone for a year on me- on military leave. That we weren't gonna replace. And if that had to be somebody that was more of a command position within the police department, this would have been this problem. And so we recognize that it happens. It actually happens quite often because of the turnover and some of the ages that we're dealing with. And retirements and things like that. We said, we recognize that for a very long-term amount. So if you look at Gary right now, who's kind of the second in charge and running water wastewater. He's doing, there's no one else to help take a lot of that burden. It is Gary and Gary singularly. Where there are some other jobs where we can divide and conquer, he has to take that burden on. And we've recognized and seen in some of our comparability studies that are other communities of our size that do have this sort of policy. York was one of them. Um, I think we looked at language from Papillion and some other places, but. Ultimately, we wanted to do is just have some sort of measure and I think this five percent matches what we saw in York is. Giving some recognition to the people that are taking on this burden, because otherwise it goes completely unrecognized other than a handshake and a thank you. For taking it over. Uh, and then here also is your, is the replacement for the job that you'll also probably train. Again, in the situations where maybe that person's not looking to do the job, but they understand that they have to carry the water for the departments that they're in. And so we drafted this, uh, we looked through it. Uh, another situation we talked about unfortunately was like in the instance, I'll use Bob Core as the example. Bob has a really large group and he kind of has two subsequent assistants underneath him. That kind of can handle two sides of his work. And we said, and we wrote language in here that said maybe, you know, the parks and rec side. Adam would take that and then Brent Peterson would take the kind of domain public properties crew and just run with it with that absence. And divide and conquer. Well, then this also gives us language so we could split that at my discretion, knowing what the assignments ended up being. But, I mean, technically, if we can't get a really good certified person that has all the qualifications for. Water wastewater, Gary could be doing this for an extensive period of time. And so something like this really is a way to kind of, you know.
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna recognize that they're doing more work and we don't know how long it's gonna last. And so we wanna. One, recognize that they are doing more work and you wanna also show our appreciation for the willingness to step up. And this is a way to recognize that and also kind of a thank you for being willing to do that. And so. Rather than just expecting them to do more and, and for the same amount of money, this gives us at least the option to be able to. Address it in a fair, an equitable, equitable way. So, I don't know, is there any questions or comments from the council on this item? Does that make sense, what we're trying to do?
I'm moved to approve. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sign up, could register your votes? Please sway the votes.
Voting in favor, Wiltkin, Tanyas, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Warden, six zero.
Alright, item four, authorization for mayor to sign all documents related to the city of Seward's certificate of compliance. And twenty twenty-three maintenance agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation. Greg?
Yes, this basically is our annual, uh, certification that basically just says, hey, we have, uh. Been meeting all the state's requirements for maintaining the portions of the two highways that come through town. That were required by agreement to maintain. Uh, and so that's how we work through it. And, uh, it helps, you can see the calculations there of, of the tons of money they give us for all the effort we have to undertake. To keep those highways clean through town for them. So, um, and maintained. But it's not just. They give us two thousand dollars for snow removal. So we're pretty good right now, but you know, in twenty. Twenty-one it wasn't. We probably clean those things way more than that. So. Um, but we have to certify this every year and this is an agreement we have with the state, so.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sign up, could register your votes? Please sway the votes.
Voting in favor, Wiltkin, Tanyas, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Warden, six zero.
Alright, item five, update on the Wellness Center and five A's authorization to negotiate a contract for design services with BBH Architecture. For the Seward Wellness Center. Greg?
Yes, uh, we went through the RFQ process to select a, uh, final designer of the Wellness Center. Uh, BBH Architecture was, uh, the ultimate winner of that process. Uh, just last week, we interviewed and thank you to councilmembers Coulterman, Streisand and Miller, uh, who sat in on that. Along with members of the school board and, uh, somebody's calling you. Um, and, uh. Then four members of the Wellness Committee who are changing the game. Uh, we interviewed RDG, Clark Anderson and BBH. Uh, the top two finishers were extremely close, but BBH won out. Um, as we've done before with the wastewater treatment plant, essentially this is just an authorization to allow us to bring you a contract. We're anticipating a contract on January third with a number of other items. One of those items will be a discussion potentially about project delivery method. Traditionally, we've done most of our projects in the city with a design bid build. Uh, we're looking at at least authorizing, we may not use. But some of the different, uh, delivery methods like design bid or design build, where one contractor handles everything. It's all done in one. Another one is construction management or manager at risk. Uh, it's kind of a complex one, but generally in matter, Jessica can correct me. Uh, is you bring earlier in the design process, you actually hire through an RFQ qualification process, the contractor. And then they come in and work hand in hand with you and the design firm and they try to basically value design. By looking at the things that the architect is recommending and saying, hey, no, 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 this is gonna cause a problem, but you can open up this space. Reduce the cost by this, that's what we're seeing in the market for purchasing on that. It can be anything from light fixtures, because they talk to vendors that they receive from the electrical side, all the way up through materials for concrete. On the outdoor finishes and things like that.
Basically.
Every element.
You could bring down your costs is kind of the way we understood it.
And then they guarantee the cost.
Absolutely. To get him involved earlier on in the project, instead of waiting for the design to be finished.
As part of that RFQ, in that process, they finalize a end-all, be-all cost that they cannot go over. And they give you that cost and that's where you're at. But again, you're driving through the design process that number down, 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 down. Then they do it and then there's no back end other than again, substantial change order, like you literally take the pool and might. Expand it by like five more lanes or something. But if you build the thing that you fit out, they take the risk. This has been utilized by a number of, uh, different facilities. I believe the middle school was done this way. And then a majority of Concordia's facilities now are being done this way. We are currently not authorized to undertake that process. We had to pass a code change or add elements in our city ordinance. And so I've sent a draft to Kelly for review. It was based off of Carney and we also looked at Columbus. Uh, it basically reads, if you read the ordinance, it's like I took state statute and reprinted it. Code format, but that's what you have to do. And then it lays out the whole process to select the contractor on behalf of the city. It's very, very, uh, to the point. And so, um, we're still working through that, we ensure we can do that, because our biggest one is ensuring that the grant. The shovel-ready grant will allow us to do that process. That's kind of up near, Matt was at the meeting the other night when we talked about that. But if we get the green light for that, I think the recommendation by the committee and the architectural firm actually. Would be to try and go with a construction management at risk model. Uh, it's predominantly what we're seeing. Um, Dave, uh, come over at Concordia has been a big help for us and guiding us on that. And he will sit in. On a majority of the process to kind of help. Again, we haven't built a building in, I don't know how long for the city. The school district, a majority of their people on the school board and even in the administration did not, were not involved in the process to build a middle school. So locally, in a government or large-scale standpoint. Because again, building it privately is different than the process we're gonna undertake. Concordia is probably the closest to us in regards to going through these processes. And so, uh, having Dave on board is gonna be very helpful, but. He's, he's been sat in on the committee and gone through this process with UNMC and the University of Nebraska as well. And that is a public facility and public process. And so, uh, we feel confident, but we wanna make sure we do it right, cause we're not gonna jeopardize that shovel-ready grant or anything. So, uh, but tonight, this will get us started. I've already kind of forewarned BBH and they've started drafting up documents and stuff, but this is kind of the formal. Process to give us authorization and then we'll get it all wrapped up by January third hopefully. And there may be some accessory items I kind of talked about tonight that will relate to that project delivery method that we'll take up on the third hopefully. So, other than that, we continue to have discussions about fundraising. We started discussions on kind of what. The staffing discussion would look like, probably more in, in relation to your authorization of the budget. To bring on the director position at some point this year. And what, where the need might be in this process for that. Is it later? Is it earlier? And so the, the. Changing the game board committee has really done a good job of hammering that out, but we've got a lot of questions, a lot of things that, especially Shane and I have been chasing down, so. I don't know if we wanna add anything more, Councilman Streisand or Councilmember Coulterman?
I, I, I would, I guess I would add is the discussion was around, since Jana's got a new job description starting January fourth. And had, did a lot of the, uh, private fundraising in the past six point seven million dollars in sixty days. To try to replace her or, um, augment that to keep that going with grants, private contributions. And endowment or endowment like we have for the library, we've always shot for that. For the new council members. We've always shot to have like an endowment for the library, for the Wellness Center. So. People that maybe do estate planning or things of that nature, some of these conversations have come up, so. We're trying to keep the ball rolling, even though we've got a big transition there when she takes her new responsibilities for us.
The, the other thing I think, we just need to make sure that we manage expectations of the timeline of this. So, you know, I know people are very anxious for it and we certainly wanna make sure we move forward as, as well as we can. You know, the progress we wanna make, but lead times on equipment with supply chain issues are going to be a very big deal. Um, that was one thing we heard from all three of the firms that we interviewed. Was some of the equipment that we'll need, like HVAC equipment and mechanical equipment related to, you know. Different aspects of this, seventy-two weeks out minimum, um, for some.
Transformers, you know.
I mean, it was just, it was, it was really like, I just wanna make sure that as the council members, if we're talking to people in our wards and. Are interested in this, managing expectations of the timeline of when this is going to be done is going to be an important part of this.
The other big element, and again, the committee will help define community members that we know are active i- in these different areas is. We'll also, we didn't, when we sat down with BBH, cause this is actually the firm that did the original master plan, but they had to compete with everybody else. We disclosed everything. So all the firms had all of their schematics and all their information and square footage that we wanted and programming and things like that. And we shared it all with them all. So everybody started off on the same foot to begin the RFQ process. Is we still, in what was developed and what we saw leading up to the election, that was just like. Hey, let's put it out and make sure the square footage works. Yeah, you generally can do it, but we didn't nuance our way through. Hey, maybe it's probably not a good idea to cross across the track to access the studio space. And so a lot of that, like finalization of the internal mechanisms.
And the design of the internal parts of the building need to be looked at. And then also how the building sits on the site. Cause there's a lot of different ways you could bring traffic to the building.
And, and middle school pedestrians.
And then with the middle school, yeah, with the middle school, having the kids wanting, we're gonna know, we're gonna all walk across the street, like, but what can you do? Like, what can we do to make this the best possible layout for safety and traffic flow? Um, so those are conversations. Um, and then of course, just generalized inflation costs were also a big part of the conversation.
That's the lay of the land. There's a lot of people going in a lot of directions, kind of doing follow-up on this. So a huge thank you to Matt Dominy, Jana Hughes and Shane Bach especially, because he's, especially on the the grant side right now, is kind of leading the charge, making sure that we continue this process and helping organize meetings and, you know, lead us uh with this Changing the Game Board. And so, uh, kind of fast and furious. So, but that's the update.
And on item A, the authorization to negotiate a contract for design services with BBH Architecture for the Sewer Wellness Center.
Simple motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize this.
Everything that you said?
Yes, everything needs a second.
There is a second there. It's easier to second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkent, Tanyas, Colterman, Singleton, Streisand, Warden, six zero.
All right, next we have the City Administrator's report.
Um, the reports there, uh, we have the job description up for the water wastewater director. Uh, we did send out some targeted letters. We just kind of identified people that had the certifications because those are public lists that we were able to acquire. And so we're just trying to get, this labor market is terrible. And so we're trying to do everything we can to control our own destiny. So Derek sent out a number of letters today to certified operators across the state. At least they have the certifications. You may not know what they're doing or what it is, but get it in front of them and let them know it's there. And so, uh, big thanks to Derek for continuing uh to work that. We've been really involved in civil service process and may continue to be now. And so that's eaten up a lot of my time uh, working on that. And I had to cover a meeting for Derek as well. Cause we're just trying to be flexible and keep keep that process moving. We did make one specific hire, so hopefully by January, we'll have one on board. And again, we still have one open potentially. Um, I can answer any other questions? Um.
Any questions or comments for Greg? If not, we entertain a motion to accept this report.
Make a motion to accept.
Sorry. Motion and second, please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkent, Tanyas, Colterman, Singleton, Streisand, Warden, six zero.
And do you have any future requests for council agenda items or administrative action? Seeing none. Um, Jonathan Jank, welcome. Announcement of upcoming events.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so earlier in December, we kicked off our shop sewer for the holidays campaign in partnership with the Sewer County Independent. There's a holiday calendar of events, so we still have things going on. Uh, maybe a good opportunity to support local businesses. And please consider, um, continue to promote these activities and remember to shop local this holiday season. Speaking of shopping.